I feel like it's a protest meeting.
It's a celebration.
Hopefully, nobody's protesting tonight.
Is there anyone, any comments?
No, there's not.
I just want to give you a sense of how we're going to work things. We're going to go from personnel, and then we will recess and go and celebrate it. So just to, so we'll be having a little bit of meeting, but not too much.
You can all stay afterwards if you want to. Just put your chairs back when you leave.
Okay, so there are no questions or comments from the floor, so we'll move right ahead. Thank you, Personnel. The first one is retirement of Brian Crisman as a bus driver and custodian. And Brian, on behalf of the whole board, I'd really love to thank you for your years of service, and we really appreciate it, and sorry to be seeing you go.
There you go.
Steven Keller wants to say it to you.
Steven just wants to say, if you would.
To acknowledge Brian's service. Brian started as a junior custodian when he was still in high school, and came back and worked here for 26 years. He's made my transition very simple. I asked Brian to do something, and I know it's going to get better. Very knowledgeable, and he has a lot of skills that most people don't see. Brian's certified welder. Most people don't know that. So anytime we've had to repair anything, we give it to Brian, and he takes care of it. So I just wanted to acknowledge the many, many years of service that I've been through for myself and for the district. You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Back to work.
How did it back to work?
First, we have to approve your.
Then you gotta have some cheesecake.
I have a second. All in favor? Okay, the next retirement is Larry Smith as custodian. And again, Larry, I'd like to thank you very much for your years of service, and sorry to be seeing you going.
Larry's not here tonight. He's one of those people who doesn't like all the popping circumstances, but we said definitely thank you for all the years of service. His son is now working here, so they actually worked together for the year, which is fantastic. And Larry's been in the business for 35 years. And he's another guy who, whatever you tell him to do, he just does it, and off he goes. And one of those types of people, you're just going to continue to miss. So outstanding. So if you do see him around, say congratulations. He's going to do a lot of traveling, he said. He can't wait for that. And so he's excited. And he looks so young.
Okay, and also I'd like to send a motion to approve his retirement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? And our final retirement is Debra.
Note to Deb and Kelly O'Neil.
And who?
Kelly O'Neil, teacher.
Oh, Kelly?
Yes.
That wasn't on my agenda. Oh, no.
It is.
Okay, so we'll go for Debra Cruel, who was a classroom aide. Are you here, Debra?
Nope, she's not here.
Okay. So again, just for the record, we want to thank her for years of service, and I would ask for motion to approve her retirement. All in favor?
And Deb is another person who's been here for many years. That was an aide in the kindergarten classroom. And that's not easy, as you're getting five-year-olds running around doing everything but. And she's such a calming type of voice, and somebody who kind of relates well with the kids and actually the faculty and staff. So we thank her for her service as well.
And Shockton said. Shockton said, add this extra retirement that I didn't know about, of Kelly O'Neil as an elementary teacher. And again, Kelly, we want to thank you for all of your years of service and the great, wonderful things you did for the kids and your care. So thank you very much.
Yep.
Principals are going to say something about tenure.
Do you want me to come out here? Don't trip.
That's a me thing.
Tonight, we gather to celebrate Kelly O'Neil, an educator that has devoted over 30 years to shaping young minds, inspiring growth, and creating an environment where learning flourishes. For over two decades, you've touched the lives of countless children from teaching math to special education to kindergarten and pre-K. For over 20 years in kindergarten and pre-K, you nurtured the very foundation of education. Your patience and compassion have provided these young learners with the most important lesson of all, that school is a safe, fun, and exciting place to be. You've helped them feel seen, heard, and valued, which will stay with them for their lifetime. You've not only been a teacher, but a mentor and a friend. While we will see your wisdom, warmth, and caring presence, we know that you have earned this well-deserved retirement. As you begin this exciting new chapter of your life, we wish you nothing but happiness, relaxation, and the joy of new adventures. May you find time to enjoy the things you've always loved, whether that's spending time with your grandchildren, traveling, or playing mahjong. Thank you for your commitment to our students, for your dedication, and the impact you've had on so many lives. Enjoy your retirement, Kelly, and know that you will always be cherished member of our school family. Congratulations.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve of Kelly's retirement.
Motion to approve.
All in favor? Congratulations, Kelly.
That was between all retirees, 85 years of service to our district. So unbelievable when you add it all up. Fantastic.
Okay, and so now we'll get to tenure. There are 11 featured up for tenure, which is really amazing and wonderful. And I'm just going to go through and read them, and we'll approve them all, and then we'll have words said about each one. So the first thing I want to say before we get to anyone is thank you so much for coming here, giving the way you have to our district, and we're just thrilled to have you be here for the long term and to help continue building our district. So thank you, and congratulations. So we have Carolyn Adams in the field of mathematics, Cecilia Boyce, science, Deanna Cook, elementary, Tammy Dingman, special education, Melissa Fisher, science, Ashley Jones, elementary, Morgan Trahan, elementary, Maria Marotti, elementary, Justice Parker, social studies, Edward Watt, English for Speakers of Other Languages, which is a new concept for me. I've never heard that, so I looked it up. And Heather Williams for special education. So I would like to ask for consent agenda to approve all of those. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
All in favor? Okay, now I have a motion to approve all 11 tenures.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Congratulations.
Do you want us to start? Yeah. We're still in order, like, right, one, two.
There you go.
When I just saw 11 tenures, it made me think of that summer. I felt like all we did was interview all summer. And in a principal, in a secondary principal's life, one of the worst days possible is when you find out you have a science teacher retiring or moving to another building, and you have a vacant science position. And we got really, really lucky that we had a former Kansas City alum. I didn't see you back there, Cece. A former Kansas City student and grad. Cece, it was Hill, right? So Cecilia Hill, graduate from Kansas City, who's been with us now for three years, hit the ground running seamlessly. I take great pride in stealing great teachers from other districts, and especially.
I'm selfish.
And Cece's become such a valuable member of the eighth grade team. I was talking to a couple of students today, and Ms. Boyce's tenure came up. Well, I brought it up. And they're like, Ms. Boyce is really tough on us. But in a way, kind of like your mom's really tough on you. Like, she cares about you, but she really wants you to do well and make sure that you does well. And that speaks volumes about who Cece is. I can't thank her enough. She's really become a rock in the middle school. I hope to have you for many, many more years. Congratulations.
I love it. This is probably going to bump out here. So I'll go alphabetically for my special ed, my special ed people. So I'm going to start with Tammy. So Tammy has only been here for like less than 20 years. And I feel like it's a little bit longer than that at this point, because she's been such an equal member of our team. So really, Tammy is going to be tethered in special ed, but what she really should be is Don, the autism spectrum disorder guru, because that is her jam right now. It wasn't initially, but you give Tammy a task, and dear God, watch out, because it will be done, and it will be done tenfold. And that shows up so much with our students that are in her classroom. So I can even begin to remember the first year in the group that I gave you. We had a group of kids that were like, we need a different level of instruction. She came in out of, I don't know, the heavens. I don't know. We found her somewhere, and whoo, all of a sudden, amazing things happen. And then we got a group of kindergartners. And I actually remember the kindergartners, because they co-taught that year. A group of, we had some nonverbal friends. We had some friends that didn't even realize that there was a potty available. They were behavioral in some respects. And those kids came so far within that school year. I'm going to tell you that I have, most of them got pushed out, required minimal support. One was D-class this year as a second grader. That is huge. That is huge, because these students learn how to be students and how to be successful in the gen ed setting, and it was amazing. So now, I was like, that's amazing. And even with your broken leg and your wheelchair, I was like, that's boring. Let's do a full autism classroom. So she, again, jumped right in. I think she has more knowledge than most of our Albany Support Systems, our North Carolina blah, blah, blah program. And we have students that are flourishing in an integrated environment. These students are nonverbal, they are behavioral. They are now pushed out with their first-grade peers. Most of them are. They are achieving. We have one that we unfortunately, much to her chagrin, is moving back to their own district this year in a less self-内心的setting. It's huge. And so I can't wait to see where our students go from this point. And it's really all thanks to Tammy and her insane-ness when it comes to research and finding answers, digging into wherever she can. Over the summer, she helps with the Friesen Stew and Autism fundraisers. They have their own organization called AIM, which is a fantastic program. She goes and works at their fundraisers over the summer. She was able to get the classroom $10,000 that has turned into a sensory-like paving. It's amazing. Last little bit, I can go on and on, but there's cheesecake, so I won't go crazy. They, we have experts that come in, because if Tammy doesn't know the answer to a problem and how to adjust a student, okay, let's bring in an expert. I literally brought in experts. I sat next to this woman who has been in the field for years and years and years, and she goes, no offense, you shouldn't have paid us, because I got nothing. Like, it's all right there. And that is huge for our district and for our students. And I can't wait to bring you more friends and more challenges. And so you can call me in the middle of the night when you're trying to troubleshoot and get me to get you something else. Congratulations. We are so fortunate to have you.
And a peanut butter cup cheesecake.
And peanut butter cup. Okay, so Heather, great job. No. So Heather, it's funny. I don't think she has a really good sense of geography. So she grew up in Fonda, right? Grew up in Fonda. So now she's here at Kansas City, quick drop down Route 5, if you're not from here. You can take five bets, there's lots of different ways. But she chose to do a totally different pathway in what she started down south, where we hit Georgia, we hit Louisiana, came back up to Glover'sville, it's a lot on gas, but she eventually landed here in Kansas City. So who knows, you can find us. What I think is best about Heather and what she has accomplished here is we took her out of a special class program. So in that case, you are the lead teacher in the classroom. You have all the control, you can run the space. You don't have to worry about other adults. And we said, no, we're going to go into co-teach, which is an entirely different beast. And she has grown and shown so much reflection and self-growth as a professional that has been incredible to see. And I think the best testament to her growth are the students that I saw this year at their interviews. So she's in fifth grade this year. She was able to loop with fourth grade, because, you know, vice day with the same co-teaching team, but I can move you all over the place. And so you could learn more skills. The rest of our special ed staff realizes the madness of that. But what I saw of those students during the interview is, more so than ever before, is the confidence, the growth, the empowerment they had over their own education that I hadn't seen from this group of students in years past. And they're excited to learn. One of the coolest things that she's brought to elementary is that goal-setting. So we talked a lot at the high school letter about those SMART goals and how to get kids to find a goal and follow it. She's brought that to the fifth-grade level, and my gosh, they are flourishing at that. So it is very, very exciting to watch not only Heather grow and, you know, let you know Heather, I'm also moving you next year, because I don't want to stay four. But watching her grow and watching her help those kids also grow has been really something. So congratulations.
I'm going to trip. It's okay, I can take a fall. I don't know if the floor can take me, but. All right, Melissa. Melissa Fisher, you know, my first year here, I heard a lot about a former science teacher, and all of it was good. The staff would talk about her all the time. The legendary Ms. Fisher. How well she connects with students, how engaging her lessons were. And every staff member had nothing but good things to say about her, while simultaneously lamenting the fact that she was no longer with us. So to get a chance to know her, I was really pleased to find out that she completely lived up to her legendary status. She liked that name, the legendary Ms. Fisher, that's going to be a meme. There's so many good things I can say about Melissa. She's hardworking and embodies professionalism. Well, at the same time, she has a certain wit about her that always makes me laugh, that students and staff across the board really appreciate. Her lessons are engaging, and she's done a great job of making students and co-teachers feel comfortable in her classroom. Her dedication to this district is second to none. And you can see her passion and innovation in everything she does. Objectively speaking, she's been extremely successful. Her passing rates on Regis scores are among the highest, both for our school historically and on our Regit. But not content to rest on her laurels, she, along with Troy Whittaker, had made the bold move to transition to a co-teach model for all of her biology classes and has worked tirelessly to ensure success with it. And that's not easy. Completely changing the way you teach is never easy. But she's doing it, doing it well, and helping move the district forward in the process. And that is one of the many reasons she's such a tremendous asset to our school. She's always thinking about what is best for the district and does so in a variety of ways, from offering college classes, stepping up to run clubs, and just being a valuable voice and pushing forward and doing initiatives. She has worked so hard for a tenure, probably harder and longer than anybody. After leaving and coming back, she had to start all over from year one. And I'm really, really, really glad that she did, because she is just a tremendous individual. And here we are, nearly 10 years from when she first came to Kansas City, and she is getting the tenure that she has always deserved. It's quite the journey, and I'm so glad you came back to us, and I'm so proud to award you tenure tonight, because you absolutely deserve it. All right, Justice. Hi, Justice. So I remember the day we interviewed Justice. So this was during COVID times, so it was all virtual. And it was me in my office, the Phils in their room, and Blake Smith in his room. And we had a whole day of interviews online in front of us. Justice was our first. All of us were just so impressed with him. He was well-dressed, he was polished, he knew his stuff historically and academically. And we all just instantly took a liking to him. When the interview was over, we all kind of knew he was going to be the one. But of course, you know, like anything, you're still excited, like, well, maybe there's something even better out there. But by the end of the day, the choice was clear. We had the last interview, and Blake Smith yelled, "No justice, no peace." He was the one. I first got to spend time with Justice when he joined us on our trip to DC for Learning 2025. I was really impressed that a teacher who hadn't even started yet was willing to join us on such an important trip and become such an integral part of our new initiatives. I was even more impressed that he was willing to walk the streets of DC with me at night to help me find the Slurpee, although it's going to be about video games. But I have no sense of direction. I'll just be in the White House. So over the last couple of years, it's just been a pleasure getting to know Justice, both personally and professionally. He is just a natural fit for the history department, and within weeks, it seemed like he's been with us forever. He even started coordinating office with the Phils, and then we came so close that the Phils literally married Justice. Phil and Phil officiated Justice's wedding. And that kind of cohesion and the bar is rare. It's one of the things that, you know, principals strive for across the board. I certainly do. They're just a great team, and it's great to see all the fruit and how that manifests. Justice has achieved the highest passing scores for the US History exam we have ever seen. His values are aligned with our vision for the history department, and he frequently teams up his econ class with the government class for senior seminars, just delivering great cross-curricular instruction that wasn't available before he came. The cohesion has raised the bar for academic excellence. We see it in all sorts of areas, including the fact that every student who leaves Kansas City does so to seal the civic readiness. That is in large part the Justice's contributions to the team. As impressive as all that is, he's just a really good guy who goes above and beyond for our kids and our community. He volunteers his time to wake up early to train ballplayers off-season. So I'm here lifting weights at 5:00 in the morning, and yes, I can't go through any speech without mentioning lifting weights at least once. And his team are there training at wee hours in the morning. And it's just wonderful. In addition to being just a great coach, he's just a great mentor. He's taken several students under his wing, and watching these young men thrive under his mentorship is just unbelievable. Justice, thank you for all that you do, and it's my great pleasure to award you tenure. All right. How you doing? Good? Satisfied? So four years ago, I was in the fitness center deadlifting. There it is again. And I got a phone call. We had just hired a woman to teach high school math. And with a week or so left before school started, she called me while I was deadlifting to decline the job. So I was stuck. I couldn't start school without a math teacher, so I did what I do best. Now, DiPaolo, before I mentioned, he likes to steal teachers from other districts. He likes to steal teachers from DiPaolo. So, sorry, Chris. Sometimes unlucky turn of events leads to something great. But calling Carolyn Adams good is an understatement. There's so much that goes into teaching. You have to learn how to make a lesson plan. You have to learn how to recritico. You have to learn about priority standards, and so much more I could draw on all night. You can learn all of that through going to school and PD. And I could talk all day about the great things about Carolyn, and all the stuff she brings to our school. But I, just because I know we're still hungry, and I'm hungry. And honestly, peanut butter cheesecake sounds amazing, so definitely a part of that. But more than the academic piece, there's an it factor. There's just an it factor that just can't be taught. And some people have it, and some people just get it, and some people don't. And Carolyn just gets it. She gets where our students are academically. She gets their background, their needs. She sees them all for who they are and loves them no matter what. And all the time I have known her, I have never heard her say a bad word about any student ever. No matter how frustrated she is, no matter what happens, she always will look at the absolute best perspective on any students. It's absolutely wonderful. In the very rare case that there's some kind of disciplinary action required in one of her classes, she always seeks to handle it through a restorative lens, to repair the harm that was caused and to use it to teach a student a lesson and build a stronger connection with that student moving forward. She has shown unconditional love and support to all of her students, and they return that in kind. That's the it factor that just not everyone has. Carolyn understands our kids and is understanding with them. She treats them with love and respect, and they return that to her. She is unbelievably reflective and wise beyond her years. I admire the way you constantly seek to improve in all areas, whether through your lesson plans, restorative practices, or just trying to understand how the kid in front of you thinks and what matters to them as an individual in their life circumstance. You've always stepped up when asked, whether becoming a certified restorative practice trainer, a member on the new star committee, being a reliable after-school tutor, and so much more. You're a tremendous asset to our school, and it is my absolutely great pleasure to award you tenure.
Okay, so my speech this season is short and sweet, and we'll get right to your cheesecake. Saying about all of the teachers that are getting tenure tonight, especially the five that I'm about to speak about. It's a privilege to acknowledge a well-rounded group of teachers, each with their own valuable experiences, qualities, strengths, and perspectives that they bring to our school family. Maria Marotti, Morgan Trahan, Deanna Cook, Ashley Jones, and Edward Watt. Congratulations. To Deanna and Ashley, you've spent your time with our kindergarten students. Your work is foundational. You've created warm, welcoming environments where curiosity sparks and lifelong love for learning begins. To Maria and Morgan, you've worked with our third and fourth grade students. You face the challenges of cultivating critical thinking, nurturing independence, and fostering a deeper understanding of the subjects you teach. Your impact is seen in the confidence of your students as they grow into more self-assured learners and individuals. In that, you have worked with our E&amp;L population. Your ability, adaptability, compassion, and innovation have made a difference in the lives of students, helping them overcome obstacles and realize their potential. We all know that teaching is a journey full of challenges, but also one of immense rewards. There are days of doubt, moments of frustration, and obstacles to overcome. But there are also countless moments of joy, pride, and fulfillment. You've demonstrated perseverance, not just in your teaching, but in your ability to adapt, grow, and make an impact on the lives of our students. You are role models. You inspire students to be the best versions of themselves, and we are lucky to have you all as part of our school family. Congratulations on earning a new tenure.
Now just remember, tenure doesn't start until September 1st. Congratulations.
If you sit there with us for about four or five minutes, then we can have our recess. So the next point, I'd like to ask for a motion for consent agenda for E through K on Thursday.
Motion for consent agenda.
Thank you. So we'll move ahead, and so we have.
I'm sorry, just real quick.
What?
Who was the, sorry, I'm the clerk today, too. So I'm typing, I'm not paying attention. Motion, Cleve, Keith, and second by Heidi, thank you.
Move on now?
Yes.
Okay, so the first thing, the key which has created a school housework position affected July 1st.
We had that for a grant for two years, and now it's rolled over to our general. Yep.
Any questions? Moving right along, we have continued temporary positions affected July 1st as well. It's a school housework position, I believe.
No.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we have the energy manager. We have the energy manager with Fran, and his position is temporary, and so is the maintenance person. So we're kind of double. You're going to see France come up, and you're going to see the maintenance person who's in there for Fran during that time.
And then we have appointing Audrey Spalding as a substitute bus driver.
Keep them coming.
Yep, we've been very lucky with bus drivers.
Very lucky.
And then we have a point. My computer is not being very helpful here. Then we have a point. Then we have appoint Bobby Bismar as a substitute monitor. Okay. And then we have, if my computer won't get there...
Eric Hazard softball.
Why don't you say it?
Eric Hazard is a softball undefeated assistant. Then appoint the energy manager and Ambrosia. And extend the appointment of... Oh, thank you. Matthew Murphy to the position of temporary buildings maintenance worker.
Okay. No questions on any of those? I would ask for motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
All in favor? Thank you. The next point on the agenda would be, I would entertain a motion for recess.
Motion.
All in favor? Let's put all the meeting back to order. Next point on the agenda is a presentation on special education co-teachers.
All right, so I'm gonna kick us off. So we've been using the co-teaching model in this district for about 13 years at this point. It's been a model that's been around much longer. But it did start right after I had my son, and so I was able to participate in that program. It's one of my favorite models in the world of special ed. So there's a couple of highlights that I just want to go over quick before I pass it to our seventh-grade English team about co-teaching and purpose. So the number-one goal that we have for our students, all students regardless of disability, is the rigor. We want to make sure that kids are challenged, that they are pushed to achieve as high as they can. And what we have found in the past is that our special classes, where you have a small group of students with disabilities who might not be able to achieve their reading levels, might be lower. Their IQs might be lower, and not necessitate the ability to learn. So what we've found is those kids in those classes are not pushed to the point that we would like them to be. So they continue to have gaps year after year after year. The co-teaching model allows us to provide those supports in the Gen Ed classroom by trying to achieve those on-level goals and on-level standards while chipping away at the gaps. Okay, so this is one of our newest teams. Carly joined us this year. And I think they really highlight some of the work that goes into co-teaching, because it sounds like a great model. Hey, you're sharing the duties. It's two people instead of one. It sounds magical. It's hard. It is painful sometimes, because basically I was setting them up for an arranged marriage. And it can be... But it's an arranged marriage that we try to do a lot of work prior to teams coming together so that they can develop a common sense of parity, of expectations, within that room so they can function fluidly. Now Carly, I really set her up, and I set up all of my middle school special ed teachers because she co-teaches with many teachers. So she covers both seventh and eighth grade. So she has really felt the heat of time to develop those relationships, not just with one co-teacher, but with four. Okay, so there's a lot of work, and this group has done a great job of collaborating and making the standards accessible to all students. The last pitch I'll give is how do we close those gaps? We have been working very hard as a special ed department, as well as the middle school, to highlight priority standards. So we might have an entire list of standards that students must achieve as a seventh grader in this case. We recognize that all of our students are going to be able to learn and master all those standards. We pull out what we call the priorities. So we did a lot of work on looking at state assessments, looking at our standards as a whole, and saying, what's gonna carry a kid or be the most important in the future? So they really dove in and picked out those priority standards to really hammer in for our students with disabilities, and then figure out how to make the stepping stones to get them to those standards.
Explain a little more on the priority standards and where you were getting them.
So the priority standards, one big thing that we were looking at was our state assessments. So we use a program called Tableau through NAREC, which takes all of our three-three-eight assessments and breaks it down into incredible amount of data sheets for us. One of those sheets allows us to look and say, okay, here's how all of our students perform on these standards in our district. So we have, it's colorful, so it's colorful. Green means we're killing it. We're doing a great job for those standards. The deep red, not so great. That's how we identify what we need to help bring to our students. So that was one way that we identified those priority standards. We also had teachers reflect on their own curriculums to determine what they see as being powerful and necessary for a student to master before moving on to the next grade level.
What's that called again?
Tableau.
Tableau.
Yep.
It really breaks down every state, every kid that takes a state test, breaks everything down, like I said, by standards, even to the student. And then it ranks against the area and the state and the local, and how we do. But then it pulls out all those, then they start to look at those standards that come out red, right, red? And really break those down. So it goes as granular as that. And then they look at the students who were having more trouble with the combinations and IEPs, break that down even further, and how that fits into their IEP. So we're really, not much more we can dig down. You know what I mean?
A lot of data analysis, and this team is also an integral in our school improvement committee at the middle school, where we've been diving even deeper and talking about how kids are looking at curriculum and so on. But we'll present on that a different time, but I will pass it over.
Is this just a middle school program?
We run this program K through 12. So I have, most of my elementary and middle is co-taught, because I have found that the more we're pushing our kids, especially when they're younger, they're actually performing higher in the future. For example, Katie Bosser has our Life Skills students. The students that I have had integrated in Gen Ed through co-teaching model, maybe small pull-out classes for targeted reading instruction, but mostly with their Gen M peers, are outperforming and working towards their CDOs credential over the students that have been in special class like their entire day. So just 12 kids, you know, focusing on basic math, basic reading, they're outperforming the students. So I really push the co-teaching model across the board. Carolyn does math up here at the high school, and like I said, we have grade levels that covers one. Yep. All right, I'll pass it over to Carly Baker and Whitney Mustard.
We're so happy to be here. Just to kind of say what Jen said in smaller terms. What co-teaching is, is when we involve a general ed, that's me, and a special education teacher together, and we collaborate, and we instruct a class with both students with and without disabilities. So what that can look like, it means like a student with a disability is going to learn alongside somebody who does not have a disability. And I always tell people, think of it as like a pilot and copilot. We're both working together. We have the same credentials, and we're both trying to get to the same kind of destination. Something just to point out, Carly passed out these, this chart that we made. It looks really scary, but I promise you it's not. It basically just lists all the modifications that students could or couldn't have, and how we apply it in a co-teach classroom. So when you go home tonight and you can reflect on everything we talked about, you can see, yeah, there will be a test. You can see how we do that.
That's a question now with kids who are, you know, being co-taught next to kids who are not being co-taught. Is there a tension there at all, or issues that come up?
If you're doing your job, it should be rather seamless. I mean, we don't ever explicitly say, you know, okay, Alicia has, you know, like, nobody really knows who has a disability and who doesn't. I mean, and of course, in instruction, maybe Alicia might be quieter than another person. But when you're working alongside peers who are excelling, you usually start to see that gap close pretty quickly, because again, they're trying to be like the peers alongside them. So typically, no. I don't, I mean, I don't have any.
And the students in our district are really inclusive. Like, as a whole, like the groups we have in co-teaching is great. Like, they support each other. Like, even when we have students who are having a hard time, they like pick up on what we're doing, like our coping strategies. They help regulate the students. Like, it's great. They come to us. They ask, hey, can I go to lab today instead? So we flip-flop. Like, the two of us just flip-flop positions all the time, all day, or basically one person. And we, you know what I mean? But that's how it works, really, because our kids don't see it any different. It's not special education teacher versus a general ed teacher. We're just their teachers, you know? They see it as two of us. We're here to help them. And it's good for the kids, like, general education students to deal with students with different needs, because then they see that. I personally am a type one diabetic, so I really love this job, because I used to have an IEP in a 504. So I take it personally. I want these kids to be able to advocate for themselves, understand, be around other kids, feel supported, and feel comfortable. So there are some hurdles in this model, though, which is what Jen was basically talking about. I do work with two grade levels, so it is hard. My day is split in half. So once I leave eighth grade, I go to seventh grade, and then my eighth graders are looking for me, my seventh graders are looking for me. So we really have to work as a team all through the middle schools, make sure all the kids are covered. So training for staff, how to effectively ensure parity and plan to meet the needs of all the students. We have to have the time for that.
And also, Jen, early in the year, make sure that we all meet collectively to like make a plan for the year, to learn what our different strategies are in those classrooms, how our personalities might mesh together. So there is like a method to the madness. It's not something that just like magically happens again. It takes a lot of planning and also just like learning about each other as we go.
And development of positive working relationship between coworkers, that's obviously something like that's important to us. We want the kids to see that we love being here together. We love being with them. Like, it helps the classroom environment. And sharing ownership of the classroom, like I said earlier, the kids don't see it as we're different. They see us as two equal teachers. Whatever she does, I support, vice versa.
There's tons of things. We could talk about the benefits all day. Obviously, the most important is equal to access to curriculum. Again, the students who have maybe a learning difference is gonna get the same exact instruction as somebody in her class. And when it comes to state exams, the kids who have a disability are gonna get the same exact exam as another seventh grader. And so we want to make sure that we're pushing that rigor so that they're getting the same access and that they feel successful for those. Again, opportunities from general education peers, greater student engagement. Sense of belonging is huge. Again, like Carly said, we're always flip-flopping in our rooms. You'll see later that there's tons of different versions of co-teaching. And so a lot of the time, we just split the class in half, and sometimes kids go to Carly's room, and sometimes kids stay in my room, and vice versa. Opportunities for small groups. Two teachers are always better in my eyes, you know? We can do small groups. Carly can pull a few kids, and they can work on a skill that they might be missing. And while I'm doing media full-group instruction, it really varies day by day, and honestly, minute by minute.
So you said you go into two separate rooms?
Depending on what we're doing.
Yeah, we'll do like a whole group lesson, and then if we have like intensive writing, and we know that our kid needs in the room. So we'll put, like, the students who need a lot of help, we'll put in one group together. We'll work with them directly. And then we'll have another group running a different station. So we really, every time we make a lesson, we plan like every single way it could go to make sure every kid can access it.
And then another thing is social-emotional benefits. Again, everything that we do in the classroom, and what honestly everyone does in Canjo K through eight is including those social-emotional curriculum and means. And we honestly just do that by being co-teachers every single day. Students are seeing how we interact with each other and how we interact with our students. And just by seeing us work together, they're also seeing that social-emotional needs, because again, we're showing them how to do it so that they can do it. Any questions? I can give you a quick success story, but really. One of the benefits, one of our students, who is particularly one of our lower students, I would say he probably is at a third secondary reading level. We just had his meeting recently to develop his new IEP for next year, and he's come like leaps and bounds. Like, we're talking to somebody who couldn't write a sentence to somebody who's writing a whole entire paragraph, restating, answering, using all of his accommodations. Some of these students are sometimes are reluctant to use those accommodations that we provide, and is advocating for them, using them on a daily basis in instruction. So that's just kind of show from last year to this year how much he's grown since he's been with us and co-teached. Really great to see.
I do have a question. No, you're giving a very positive.
Oh, yeah, we're getting to the... Actually, we're gonna touch base on that right now. Okay, so obviously, yes, knowledge of general education, that's me. I'm the ELA girlie. I know everything about ELA. I know what the state exam is asking of our students, and then I base our curriculum on that. I know where we're deficient when it comes to all of these, all the stats that we've looked at, and where we need to go and move forward with. Carly, I do the knowledge of students' needs, so I come in, I say, okay, this is great, but we have to get them to access this standard, so how can we do that? So we provide the modifications. We look at it together. We cut things. We make it so that they can still do the grade level work. And then knowledge of instruction strategies. Like, anytime we have a lesson, we look at it, we see how we can make it better for the kids in the room.
And I always say...
Could you give an example of a modification, maybe bring them up to a grade level work?
Yeah, like, sometimes if we have like a heavy reading comp, like words, like vocab words, that would be like really hard for them, like not, like not basic words, like, you know, according to like the text, like if it's a science passage, something like that. So what we'll do is we'll look at it, and then I will take the reading level down. Like, I will modify all the work. I don't know how to like explain that better. So I basically chop things up. I kind of go in, I highlight things, like things that I know are to be roadblocks for them, to make sure that they can get past that roadblock.
It's helping them access. So the goal of that lesson is to learn these concepts. Okay, so there's vocabulary terms that they're going to discern from the reading passage. What we will do is take that reading passage down to their level so that they can access the vocabulary. They understand the terminology. Okay, there's also other ones, like with writing. We have kids that, okay, they have difficulty starting a writing response. We'll give them sentence starters, so that it's almost like a cue to, okay, now, this is how it starts, now I can keep going. It's just, it's a ton of different things depending on student.
And like, technology is so great now, too. Like, a lot of our students, like, use speech and text, or to get their thoughts out. They're having a hard time, but it's easier for them to do that, or spelling, if that's like a huge hurdle in their way, speech and text helps with that. So we try different things all the time, whatever works best for them.
Yeah, and writing is something in particular that seventh graders in middle school are struggle with in general, because they don't like writing. And so usually what we start with just across the board is seventh graders always start with a graphic organizer. It becomes a norm for us. Like, before you write any paragraph or any essay, you're gonna do a graphic organizer. We suggest it for the state exam, and it's great just to have throughout their whole schooling career. And that's an accommodation for a lot of our kids who are in our special education program.
Graphic organization.
So for example, kind of.
Yeah, like, make out the steps that you need to do in order. So like, kids who have a hard time like processing or like understanding, like first, then next, last, like they can look at the checklist and be like, okay, this is the first thing on the graph, or is there a ID to do? And like, help them plan their writing. Does that make sense?
But like I said, like you said, it's not always rainbows and butterflies. Really, we can plan the most perfect week, and in our eyes, we're like, okay, this is what we have to get at the end of the week. And we may only get to the first part.
And there's also middle schoolers, too. So they've got so many like emotions going on, so a lot of times, too, it's depending on where they're at, where their headspace is. We have to have a day where it's a self-care day, like talking about what happened, like socially, then we do that. Like, we basically plan based on that, what they need, what the best thing for them is.
I mean, we can have students who are totally dysregulated, and then Carly may have to take those students to regulate. And I may have to do the lesson, and then we may have to go reteach the lesson to those who need to be regulated. And then there's some days that Carly and I maybe just don't vibe. I mean, we're human, right? So maybe I'm having a horrible day, and by the time I get to co-teach, which is at the end of the day, which is a struggle in itself. Which is at the end of, not just... Which is at the end of the day. Sometimes we're just like burnt out, and so sometimes we just have to flip it, because again, we want to be the best teachers we can be. And sometimes that's just a matter of flipping the classroom and maybe doing something a little less than what we planned to make sure that we're still giving our best self to the students.
That's why it's a great time to a bus, because if she is tired, then I step in. You see what I'm saying? Like, we always like, it's like a one-person job.
You know, fill in the gaps, fill in the gaps.
Yeah, so these are the models that we were talking about earlier, like how we do it. So there is the one teach, one assist, one lead, the other support. Sometimes we do this. This is what Whitney was talking about, like when I have to regulate a student or dysregulate, I sometimes step out, she will take care of that, and then I'll come back in, join the lesson, see where the kids are at.
I'm teaching ideally, both of us would be teaching equally. This is like the dream team. This is what we'd like to do on most days. That's where you would be the students, and Carly and I are up here teaching together, maybe walking around while she's talking, I'm checking in with everybody. So that would be more of the team teaching. That's like, we're always drinking that.
Parallel teaching, this is when we like split the class in half. If there's a hard concept, even for math, like we do this a lot in parallel teaching. We know where our groups are, so we split them up.
The alternative teaching, where one teacher works with a smaller group for targeted support, and then maybe I have a larger group.
Station teaching, we divide the students into small groups and rotate. We love, the kids love this, because they always love to move around and like do hands-on activities, which is great.
Yeah, if you ask any middle schooler, they'll say station teaching is their favorite. Yeah. And then the last one is just when one teacher is teaching, and that's one teacher is observing, and that's mostly just for like data collection. So for example, if a student is gonna get classified by Jen at some point, then Carly may be watching them and observing how they're learning, what they're doing when they're learning, so that we can make sure that they're getting the current classification moving forward.
And support's in place, like see what they need.
Do you have any questions on the models?
I was wondering, do you have groups of students that work together? Do you do any of that kind of work?
Oh, yeah, students work together all the time. That's another thing we do. We also either pair students in small groups, do partner work. I would say we're pretty much doing that every day, every day in class. That's kind of the norm.
Yeah, the model of rows of students is really gone now, which is fantastic. If you go by its classrooms, it's really a lot of group type of stuff.
We've even gotten to the point where students that are achieving and they've done whatever, they now become the assistant.
Yeah.
Just help someone, go help someone, so and they, they, they love it. They take right off with it and it's one more set of help. And the kids accept the help from the other kids. So it's really good. And it's never really the same kids. Cause somebody gets something, they have a concept better than somebody else. You know, never really the same kids.
Yeah.
It's good.
So the goal in general is just to make sure that again, the curriculum is accessible. So that we Jen already talked about this, that we have recently identified priority standards. And those are those standards that our students aren't currently reaching to the best of their ability and how we can close those gaps in our classroom. Um, we recently, what was it? Recently, second quarter, the math and ELA department got together and we worked on aligning curriculum all day long, sitting in a conference room, making sure that all the curriculum that we have is aligning to again, close those gaps. Um, for example, ELA, a big thing is determining theme and central idea of a story. So what is the story mostly about and what is the message? For some reason, middle school, that's like a very abstract thing. They're very literal. And we're like, well, the story is about a spider. And like, okay, but what is the spider telling us as a group? Like what is the, what is the message? What are we trying to learn from that spider? And that's something that's really tricky for them. Um, so again, something that we do all the time is make sure that we have a multi-layered approach. So modeling all the time, using graphic organizers, doing a ton of guided practice.
Yep.
Over and over and over again until they get sick in the head of it, but it works because it sticks. Um, and then just making sure we're giving them that consistent formative feedback so they know how they can improve moving forward.
And we want our special education students to be the most least restrictive environment, which is what the benefit of this model involves. They can be with their peers. They can be with their classmates. They can play sports. They can do the same things. There's no reason they can't.
So yeah, that's what a co-teacher is.
And Jen, Jen has done a lot of uh summer training with this.
We have new teams.
But in-depth summer training.
But we do co-teach training and that's where we set, you know, a lot of it is based on others, what it warms, what ticks you off. And let's talk about what ticks you off so that you guys can avoid it together. How can you set up your classroom together? So, um, it's a lot of work with just relationship. Well, like these are some of the things, like I tried to include like six grades upgrade, but like a lot of things we do are hands-on. Like they read a passage about dragon fruit that was like native to this certain species. So they gave them dragon fruit to try. So like we try to make it engaging. Here we did a gallery walk in eighth grade in preparation for state testing. We gave them all rubric, showed them how to use the rubric, what they needed to do to get good scores. Our kids who did not wanna do a presentation ever are finally doing it like on their own, like with supports like us being there, but they're doing it, which is awesome. They're working together. They're confident. They're skiing, they're trying to get their things. So we really push that and that's the thing.
That's great.
And does co-teaching fit into that picture right there? The skiing.
Because he would never do that if he knew that student. That was something he would never try. Took two of us to get the boot on his foot and not the skiing talent. Yes. No, I agree. I agree. Yeah.
I was wondering, have you seen any impact of our cell phone policy?
Honestly, they're, they're, they live like, it's not a problem. They don't lose them. We tell them to not.
I prefer to leave the cellphone. If I do, it's out of their pocket and they go, oh, my pocket.
As fast as I can, yeah, don't take it. Yeah. Thank you.
Are you there?
Thank you guys.
Okay, so moving right along, um, we get one of the agenda approvals.
Nope, we got student presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep. Gotta prove this little thing called a budget too.
Okay, so as usual, um, Alex gave us a, a presentation. Unfortunately, she's not here to give it. Um, so.
We're in Gawa, right?
Gawa, yeah. Our field got ringed out. So the softball team went to Gawa.
Um, so some, I have this.
Thank you.
Results, thanks for. Bye. So the baseball uh team was the only one that had a game. You have to postpone and they started off on a winning note, which is nice.
Be the team that was undefeated already. So that was good.
Um, then they had Star Day and I have no idea what a great slot production.
Kenjo Game Show.
What?
Kenjo Game Show. So you, you know Kenjo Game Show? Uh, so the Phils put on, the Phils dress up as this little, um, really cheeky uh talk show host. They both wear these ridiculous outfits with a mustache and jackets. And they do, um, they do just a variety of like, of, of different games, like, you know, Faculty Feud and Guess What Happens Next? And so it's the whole afternoon. It's, it's hilarious. They, they throw in these fake commercials. They did a commercial for Kenjo paper towels, which is probably the funniest thing I've ever seen in my life. I mean, it was so funny. And uh, yeah, it's, it's just a great time. So in the morning we did like pie Star Day. So it was all mathematics-based activities kind of around pie, you know, um, three point one four pie, not delicious cheesecake pie. And then, you know, we all ate lunch together and the kids, like we kinda keep it a secret, you know, but also leak it to build excitement, you know? We bring them to the auditorium and then they put on, it's, it's just, it's just two hours of just, um, completely foolish hilarity is how I would describe it.
Is it recorded?
Uh, you know, it's not.
I don't know if it is or not.
We probably should actually. Yeah, I'm sure the little snippets here and there. Yeah.
Last meeting when they were here presenting the history to Tom in as the game show.
It's like, I can't remember their name.
Detention, detention and Marcus absent.
Yeah.
And they are hilarious and the, the animations that they have.
Yeah, they, it's, they make AI, they made like AI commercials. I mean, really just, just hilarious. Like it really was a good time.
Yeah, so I did want them to present it and then I was hoping they'd invite you to come see the.
Agenda for next.
I'm not, I'm not bothered if you could let us know, give us a, an advance notice.
Yes.
I, I wanna laugh.
You could even join in. We could even make it, I'll tell, make a special board member game. All you have to come and participate in.
Volunteers.
And then, uh, just a note on the prom and post-prom, which will be May seventeenth. And, uh, I know we've talked about that in the past, that no one will be permitted from going for lack of. Um, anything to report about that in particular?
Um, I, I don't think nothing that's already not been reported.
Okay. And then there's a big thank you. Okay, so moving right on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, a couple of things. One, we started state testing this week. I don't know if you probably heard the news, but the computer-based testing, um, flopped kind of completely. They say only ten percent, but ten percent is two hundred thousand students. Um, so, um, the, the program, how do I say? The place that administers the test, their, their, their software, their, their server didn't take all of the sign-ins and logins. So it kind of kicked kids out. You can imagine the anxiety of kids, the anxiety of kids taking the test and now sitting in a room for forty-five minutes waiting to log in. So there's a lot of push right now from superintendents to look at this data, say that you cannot use this for accountability. Uh, you can't have it both ways. Meaning tell us that no distractions, make sure the kids have every thing under, you know, the book when they take a test and have this happen. You know, a, as we know, we're, we're on the accountability list for, for small area. You imagine a student with disabilities possibly who has an IEP, who is now in for forty-five minutes in the classroom waiting to take a test. So anyway, well, it wasn't good overall. Um, so we finished though, we started and finished it. We, we held steady where a lot of schools bagged it and went on to another day, which you can imagine what that does. Now it's another day of no teaching, right? And, and you have to restructure that day at ten o'clock in the morning and say, I were gonna adjust it uh from there. So anyway, um, proud of our two T, our, our two uh schools who kinda stayed the course and, and finished it. So we'll see what the results will be.
Have a happy day.
No, not at all.
It was a frustrating situation and the guidance that was rolling out in the moment was lacking to say the least.
Yeah.
To, to save pause. And we're a small school, so I have two hundred students testing. And when the guidance is pause all tests, wait fifteen minutes, can log students in in groups of twenty every fifteen minutes. So that means students one eighty to two hundred are gonna be sitting for two hours before they can try to log in to take the test. It is so far departed from the reality of what a school faces on a daily basis. It was quite frustrating.
So you imagine what it's answered.
Catch a lot of flack for the poor test results.
I will, I will kudos to our teachers and our students who were very patient through the process. Luckily, we had started, most students had started testing before the slowdown happened. So it impacted a small percentage of students not being able to sign in, or if a student paused to go to the restroom, they were not able to get back in. Um.
Don't they do a dry run, Chris?
Yeah.
We did, we did the dry run.
They're, I mean, they're.
Supposed to.
Yes.
I wouldn't think this company's gonna be bad next year.
When the fir-, when the first incident happened, I, on Tuesday, we received an email at four o'clock saying that NWEA tested their system. It's optimized. It's running at one hundred percent. And then at eight fifteen the next morning, we had the same problem.
Um, on Tuesday, fifth grade took the science and at eight thirty it started and then I started getting, well, I had a, all, most of the fifth graders in the fifth, in the, in the great room. And then I had a teacher call me. Then I had another teacher call me and I was like, wait, did I give you the wrong login? I don't understand. And then finally we got a message from the state saying that like the school, that the program wasn't working. But finally I could, we kept them tests running and at nine thirty, which was when I was gonna call the test off, we were able to get on to the program. So they had to wait an hour to get on.
I'm just saying, so parent, you know, back in the day, make sure it's, it has a good breakfast, you know, try to set up everything. You know, I have a handicapping condition, but you try to set it up so they will have a best chance they can to have normal transition into it. And this stuff, you just don't get it back.
No.
After, from that point on.
Yeah.
Not an accurate measure, in my.
And then I had to redo like the schedule because it affects our schedule. Like when are they gonna have lunch? When are they gonna have their special that they're looking for or to like? We had to like change around everything because of an hour delay. So, yeah.
And, and this goes further. Remember the opt-out situation we had? This gives everybody an opportunity at this point to say, they're not gonna take those tests anymore. And they got all the right to do that. So you might see another movement happen. And then the state and federal government's gonna stick us again and say, your percentages are too low, you know? So it's, they got some crow to eat here, you know, and hopefully they do. We'll see what happens. So, um, so the testing part, uh, tomorrow's the end of the third quarter already. Uh, we come back from the break with all the extra snow days and a couple of half days. We're gonna have twenty-four, twenty-five class days before June. So this, this year is, is definitely a flying question. Um, just some updates on some building project stuff. As you know, we've entered into a solar agreement. We, we got a grant for geothermal uh project to do our heating and cooling down the elementary and, um, decarbonization project, really a great fourteen million dollars, one point four million from, like I said, Niserta. And then in the meantime, we're planning our next capital project. You know, our buildings are twenty-five years old up here, twenty-seven years old. By the time we, by the time we, um, we do the project and the same thing with the, the bus garage. Um, so we plan this well in advance. Like there's a lot of planning already on this stuff. Um, the state in their infinite wisdom decided to realize that they messed up with how they categorize solar. Meaning solar is now what's called in, um, not construction, but not intent, um, incidental costs. So what that does, I'll break this down a little bit. When, when you have, um, an amount of money or amount of, uh, I say money, money to use, uh, cost allowance for each building, for your projects. So right now we have about forty million dollars of cost allowance in construction and we have about nine million dollars in incidentals. That's just the way it breaks down. Solar was supposed to be in the construction costs. It's now being moved into the incidentals. So we're looking at one point three million dollars, one point seven million dollars to go incidentals. And then if we do the geothermal, we're looking at another four million dollars into the incidentals. So once you do that and then add your capital project, you don't have enough to do all three. So they just recently changed this without any repercussion in terms of what it affects. I just think we create these projects today. So, uh, we've been fighting with, um, with state ed and, uh, working with fiscal advisors to get a breakdown of what this looks like with or without it. And I'm gonna have a meeting with the higher ups, I hope next week, um, hopefully they get back to me to just kind of say, this isn't the time or place because you messed up how it was categorized to level this on people right now, um, any project in the works. And I think we have some say in this because the solar project was already submitted but not approved. And the geothermal was, we, we got the grant with the approval five, six months ago. So I think we, hopefully we have some say that they can change this. I can't promise that, but that just messes up everything. In terms of now our project that was twenty-five or twenty-six million, possibly goes down to eighteen million. It was split up into two parts, two thousand twenty-seven and two thousand twenty-nine.
They should just create another, and then preset it.
I wish.
State in the future say implement this in the next calendar year or the year after.
And they messed it up. So now they're not eating crow on this and it's, and it's affecting us. So I, I hope when we tell our story, it makes sense to them and they take it into consideration. Um, so hopefully we have a meeting soon with it. So just giving everybody a heads up, there's a lot going on and it, and it's a ripple effect. It's a domino effect. But one project to the next project to the next project. So we'll see, we'll see what ends up happening. So just wanna give you a heads up on that and I'll let you know as we get more information back. So that's my report for the most part.
So you, don't you have any bright news?
Yes, we, our fourth quarter is almost here. And the weather is, well, I can't say that either. We're gonna get snow tonight.
Moving right along, we have the finance committee report. Take it away, Nick.
Yeah, finance committee wrapped up into our, um, our budget. So if you wanna click on the budget, Chris, is it possible to put that?
I can't get the screen to come back up, so I'm just letting it audio record right now.
Okay.
I don't wanna shut off the car.
You guys have your presentation in there? You can open that up. And if, if Fran or Carol Anne, if they wanna come over and look at a computer. Um, so pretty much with our, our budget, um, this, if you go past the first, second pages, you know, obviously our mission, our vision and our values, again, everything we do, we take into consideration this first. And then we put together budgets and programs from that. Um, it's, it's our guide. And, um, our goals for the budget are simple. Maintain programs for students. If you notice, it doesn't say, you know, uh, progress programs for students. Um, not to exceed the allowable tax cap and maintain jobs. Um, and, and I think what I, we're trying to kind of, we're morphing into status quo, uh, or morphing the status quo because the revenues don't exceed the expenses, you know? And we got lucky the last four years with the federal funds and some grants. We restructured our, our, uh, our, our, our medical benefits. We did all the things. Cause if you remember seven years ago, you were sitting here that we were seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in the hole and we, we, we started to talk about cuts. So we were able to kind of reverse that for a while. But as, okay, we restructured our, our, our benefits, but they went up six percent every year for five years. That's a thirty percent increase, right? So you're looking a, at, at that is outweighing what we're getting in for funds. Uh, not to mention, the federal is, you know, up in the air right now. So I don't know where that's heading. So anyway, that's our, our three goals. Um, twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget has a tax increase of only one point five three. Um, on a five-year average, it's only one point seven eight percent. So we've done a phenomenal job for the community. Uh, that's good. The bad part is one point seven eight percent on average, um, doesn't give us a lot of revenue coming in. Um, I already saw one school district go above, looking at above the tax cap. I think you're gonna see fifteen to twenty across the state this year that will try to go above the tax cap. It's not feasible. It's not feasible to stay in the tax cap. So, um, we'll see what happens. Uh, current proposal maintains student resources. It maintains positions, uh, that were in the general fund budget. And it uses establishes reserves and fund balance to offset annual purchases. Uh, you know, we have our equipment reserve that gets, gets things out of our general fund budget. So we can really look at what's just in our general fund. And then, um, we're looking to use ERS, TRS, um, and also fund balance to close the gap. Now I caution that by saying this, in the last four or five years, we've had that to close the gap, but we haven't had to use it. We haven't had to use it because there's been federal funds come in and stuff of that nature. That's not happening anymore. So you're gonna, again, you're gonna, you're seeing it in the news. You know, Scotia, Cobleskill, um, you know, two schools that are close are already talking about CD cap and cutting positions, right? That's gonna kinda start to be the norm a little bit. Uh, I think we've done a good job though of keeping costs down. Like I said, six percent in, in health insurance. Um, and, uh, getting grants. Like I said, 6% in in health insurance, um, and, uh, getting grants and being careful with with what we're doing. So the overview here is our foundation aid went up 4.5%, which is great this year, no doubt about it. Our use of our TRS and ERS, again, to close our gap. Um, addition of a 912 counselor, which was in a, which was in a grant, that's in there. Capital bus reserve for two buses, uh, because we're getting one electric, if you remember, instead of having three. Um, equipment reserve, uh, we have to, we're going to use that for last classroom furniture round, technology and some facilities equipment that we just need to upgrade. Um, we're going to reestablish the equipment reserve. If you remember, when equipment reserve reaches its cap, you have to reestablish it. So even though you have $500,000 for one, once you spend $500,000, you then have to reestablish. So reestablish that, not saying we're going to put the whole 500,000 in, we're just saying it's there if we want to. Um, we're hoping to do the carbon reduction in geothermal. I say we will, but it's going to be different. And then we have a board of education representative, uh, Dr. Brody's, uh, position is up and he's re, you know, petitioning to reapply and no one else has come, uh, forward yet. So could be an easy election. Anyway. So if you go down to the next two pages, this is the breakdown of the budget. And like always, and it's not anybody's fault or admission, the top four lines are your biggest increases because they're just contractual obligations. We have to pay people. That's, you know, that's just normal and that's what happens. Um, the other big ones, you know, health insurance, uh, we cut that a little bit, even though with the increase, because now we've had three years and four years of this insurance. So now we have a good idea of where we are and how many people rolled over to the deductible plan. Um, and then your ERS, you know, usually goes up and your TRS usually kind of goes up. Though we leveled the TRS because we were over budget for that because we were afraid one year was going to come in at like 18%. They were talking about that. So it didn't, that's good. So we kind of lowered that a little bit. Bosse's went down a little bit because of some P-Tech, um, spots and some other items, but you can see our debt service and things of that nature. If you go down to the revenues, our revenues are 1.53% tax increase, it's $124,000. Remember, we're about an average of 178, which is only about a $135,000 on average. We did get a good foundation aid increase as of now, I hope they don't change it before the budget's approved. Um, expense-driven aid ties off with debt service for the most part. And then you can kind of see below, we have other revenue sources, but you can see that we have ERS, TRS and fund balance to close the gap. Now, if you look at 24, 25, we also had ERS and fund balance to close the gap, right? So just to kind of, um, an offshoot of this, since we had so much fund balance the last couple of years, we took the total of the ERS reserve and the fund balance of last year and put a a restricted fund balance amount of that amount that New York State allows you to do into another account. So that sits there in case we have to use that money to subsidize that. I hope this year we kind of break out even, that way we don't have to use it so that 850 goes into next year. Um, next year, because we closed the, some of the gaps on the, on the, uh, on the line items, I I can't imagine that we're not going to use reserve next year. This year, we might get out of it, next year, we plan on get, we won't. And I caution this for any school district, even though we have $3.1 million in an ERS reserve and $680,000 in TRS reserve. Um, the problem is, once you start using reserves more than two years in a row, you know where it's heading. And you can't rely on that because you have to continue your general fund to make sure your revenues outpace your expenses. Because here's the other problem. If you don't outweigh your expenses, you're never going to be able to put anything in a building reserve, an equipment reserve. So we'll have to watch that, but I think over the next, after the next couple of years, we'll continually use reserve. So next year, I think we're going to have to start talking about ideas of what we can do to level the playing field and that. Because listen, again, we have to give benefits and we have to pay people. That's part of the, you know, what we're going to do. Uh, we value people here and that's what we need to do. What comes with that, though, like anything else, if there's more expenses than revenue, something has to give, right? So we'll kind of take it from there. Um, so our budget right now is status quo. Again, it keeps the district fiscally solvent for right now. It keeps the tax burden to a minimum. Um, so if we approve the budget tonight, that's what we'll move forward with. We have budget meetings on April 29th for faculty and staff, a community budget hearing on May 8th. And then May 12th, I do a WebEx in case anybody can't make the budget hearing. So any questions on the budget? It's pretty clear cut and dry. There's not much change from last time. The only change was the increase due to the, um, extension on the contract that we agreed to. So. Any questions? So, you know, we're not in dire straits at all. Uh, we just can't get, we can't keep progressing. That's the, and that's why we were looking at the merger, right? We were looking at the merger to say, this can kind of keep progressing for kids as opposed to the status quo. Not that the status quo is bad, it's just we want to offer our kids the best, right? So makes sense? So that's our budget. Any other questions on that? Okay.
Thank you.
So then at this point, we have to have an action item to. It's down further? I think it's in this one. Yeah.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to approve the proposed budget.
Motion to approve the.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you. Here we can move on to approvals. Um, we'll have to do the first minute, because not all of us were there. And after that, we can, uh, consent agenda. So any question on the April 3rd? Yes.
And I'm sorry, go back to that, you get to consent agenda, but you had to pull out the minutes you said?
The April 30 minutes because not all of us were there.
Okay.
Um, I would entertain a motion to approve the April 3rd.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Lori and I abstained because we weren't to.
Does that mean you can't pass?
We can't pass.
Can't pass.
Alright, so I'll have to do that again next time.
So we'll have to, um.
Okay, um, then I would entertain a motion for consent agenda or C through J.
Motion for consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Any question on the minutes? Small thing on the minutes?
Just, okay, let me just.
Um, no, these are minutes, excuse me.
Um, hold on, let me just get this.
If you go to reports, um.
Hold on, hold on. Not as fast as, as Andrea. Okay, go ahead.
If you go to reports B, um, my name is spelled wrong.
Reports in the minutes?
Yeah, it's reports on letter B.
Gotcha.
My name does, Brody does not have an A in it.
You were waiting all day for that, weren't you?
I think it's funny because it's usually the other way around.
As I said, it was a small point.
Yep. Oprah.
Okay, uh, bills, um, since Leah's here, not here, I'll keep my mouth shut.
You can throw an email at us. Yeah.
Okay, treasurer's report? Anything there? Okay, budget transfers, anything there? Okay, transportation requests? Lots of people are going to Bible school? Anything there? Okay. Agreement with Mayfield, we have one of their students here? Anything there? Okay, surplus? And approved courses, anything there?
New courses for next year.
I was really, really impressed with the nature of those courses. They seem really, really fascinating and and interesting. I'm really happy for the students that have the opportunity to to, you know, participate at most because it really looks like some innovative and interesting, you know, thing. So, good job.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think you sent a motion to consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Moving right along to all business. This is just reminders for two upcoming meetings or three acts. April 30th, 7:45, we'll be voting, uh, voting to approve the Bosse's budget. And then we have a, uh, a meeting of, uh, um, portrait of a graduate presentation on May 15th at 9:00 AM up at Bosse's. Um, it'll be, uh, Daggett will be speaking and I'm really fascinated and I will bring anything of ideas and internationally known. And so I would really encourage anyone that's available to go to sit and do it. Okay, and then the last thing is the budget vote is on May 20th, as you know, and we're going to be having a meeting after the polls close and we have the results in order to hopefully approve the budget.
Could do that virtually.
Yes, so, you know, so if you're not there, you can, you know, we'll have a, some kind of a.
Yep, WebEx.
Go by WebEx.
And Andrea will send out the.
Yes, yep.
Okay, um, what was this one, nominated candidates and daughters of annually needing 321?
That's the bases.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah, the ones that from the other, the other night, yeah. That's what we're voting on the 30th.
Along with the budget.
Yep.
And, uh, oh, then there's also the, uh, the meeting on the 8th, May 8th, which is our regular board meeting. Um, we'll start a half an hour earlier at 5:30. That's going to be a budget, a budget here. We have that in the auditorium, which is.
We'll probably have it here.
Yeah.
Meet the candidate and then we'll. I heard the candidate stopped the branch.
Why, why, why do I want to? Okay. Um, do we have anything for executive?
Yes.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to move into executive. All in favor?